Country, we are are still seeing, you know, substantial spread as far as COVID-19. I won't go over all of the the impact piece of it. I know we covered this last time that we spoke, but I did include just the information as far as how the tiers are determined and and what all of that means. So you can see the red is the number of new cases over the last two weeks. Uh, the and the one of the the following percent positive or impact on the hospital. Uh, so again, you'll have a copy of this that you can look at this in more detail. Based on these color codes, uh, the state has put together recommended actions. And truthfully, I think we're really doing everything that we can at this point, uh, including our vaccine efforts. And I think that is truly the light at the end of the tunnel, uh, that we are so very grateful for and grateful that that we have, as a district, we have administered, uh, well over twenty thousand vaccines, uh, in our eight counties. So, um, quite, quite a task over the last month. Um, but just a a few more reminders as far as how COVID-19 spreads, you know, it is a respiratory illness. It is primarily tiny droplets, uh, those aerosolized droplets. We look at the contact as far as individuals who are within six feet for greater than fifteen minutes. And then, of course, things with more force like coughing, sneezing, yelling, singing, cheering. All of that can spread those droplets and those particles farther. So that is one thing that you see in a lot of the guidance. Uh, as far as when are people contagious, they are most contagious when they have symptoms, but yet they also can shed and spread the virus forty-eight hours prior to symptom onset. This isn't something that's new with COVID. Uh, if you consider flu, for instance, uh, influenza viruses, you actually are shedding the influenza virus for twenty-four hours prior to your first symptom. So this is something that we see with a lot of viruses. As far as surfaces, um, we see, we can see some surface spread of the virus, but most likely in those situations, it is a fresh surface where the virus could be. And then you have touched it with your hands and then have touched, you know, your eyes, your nose, or your mouth. So this is where that hand washing is really crucial and trying not to touch, touch your face and and your eyes and your nose and your mouth. Symptoms, we've, we've all heard this, you know, this is definitely a complex virus. Uh, it truly affects everyone so differently. Um, you know, you have some individuals who may have a sore throat and loss of taste or smell, but really nothing else. Uh, you could have some individuals who truly develop that respiratory condition with that shortness of breath and difficulty breathing and the cough. Um, it truly is unbelievable how it, how it impacts so many people so differently. Um, but these, you know, all of these symptoms have definitely been associated with COVID. We typically see high risk in individuals who are sixty-five and older, uh, those with underlying not well-controlled, uh, medical conditions. Uh, so again, this totally varies from person to person, uh, and and really no rhyme or reason in a lot of what, lot of what we see. Two types of tests for COVID, there's the PCR and molecular test or the antigen test. So the PCR is the swab and where they actually send that off to a lab to be processed. And we're seeing most of our turnaround times roughly twenty-four to seventy-two hours, we're getting those results back. Uh, I know you all have one of the Optum testing sites in Hartford County, and they have been doing a really great job. Most of their results come back, it is a PCR test that they do, and most of those results come back in about twenty-four hours. So that is excellent. The antigen test is the rapid test, so, um, we can equate that. It it literally looks almost like a a pregnancy test where they they swab your nose and put it into like a little card, uh, and and you watch it change colors, uh, much like a a pregnancy test. Um, the PCR really is the gold standard. Uh, depending on your results with the antigen test, we likely would still recommend a PCR. Isolation versus quarantine, these are some words that we kind of get confused all the time. So that's why we wanted to to outline that here for you. Isolation is what we do for sick people. So if you are sick, you are symptomatic, you are positive, we isolate. Uh, if you have been exposed to someone who is sick, but you yourself are not sick, then we quarantine. And so what that quarantine does is it kind of limits your movement. So that way, if you do become sick, you have not exposed other people. Uh, it can be a very, very helpful strategy in limiting, uh, limiting the spread. So if you are sick, when can you go back to your normal activities? And right now, uh, that guidance is still that you have to answer yes to these three questions and all three of these. Has it been at least ten days since you first had symptoms? Are you fever-free for twenty-four hours without any medicine for fever? And are your other symptoms improved? If you can answer yes to all three, then you can come off of isolation. So again, if you've been sick. As far as a close contact, um, again, you guys can probably answer these for me. You know what a close contact is? Uh, within six feet for greater than fifteen minutes, if you're providing care at home for someone is sick, that direct physical contact, hug or kiss, um, sharing, eating, or drinking utensils. And if, if you happen to be close to someone and they sneeze or coughed on you, uh, then obviously that could potentially be a close contact as well. So we did share with you, I think, the last time that we spoke, that the new quarantine guidance was issued on the third. Um, so if you are identified as a close contact and you can see that guidance here, uh, this is still the, the, the standard. Uh, we are hearing some buzz that this could be changed in the next couple of weeks based on the vaccine and individuals who have been fully vaccinated. So that could be some really great, uh, and very positive news coming, coming forth soon. And so we are definitely on the lookout for that. Um, but essentially what they've done is they've looked at how people typically get sick after they've been exposed and what that timeframe is. And you'll recall that the incubation period for COVID, and so the incubation period is the time that it takes for someone to develop their first symptom, is two to fourteen days, uh, and that is a very long time. So the, the, the gold standard because of that is, um, to quarantine for the fourteen days. However, they have done a lot of studies, and what they have found is that after ten days, if you do not have any symptoms, you only have about a seven percent chance of developing symptoms. So that's why they've put this ten-day piece in here. So if you haven't developed any symptoms and you've been in quarantine for ten days, you can move around a little bit more. We still really want you to limit your distance from individuals and wear a mask. Um, but you can do a little bit more, uh, at that ten-day mark. As far as the third option, uh, the seven days of quarantine, what they have found is most individuals actually develop their first symptoms around day four or five, uh, and indefinitely before day seven. So they found that after day seven, there's only about a twenty-two percent chance that you'll develop symptoms. So what they have said is that around day five to day seven, if you want to go get a test, uh, and that test comes back negative, then on day eight, you can kind of go and and do. But again, making sure that you're, you're keeping that mask, social distancing and everything for that full fourteen days. So this can be a little confusing, and I will say now that we have had this, uh, in practice for a little while with our school systems, I think really what it comes down to with our schools is how well can individuals keep their distance? So for instance, what we have seen with a lot of our schools is like the, the older students or the teachers, they may be able to do that ten-day, seven-day piece, uh, as far as the quarantine guidance based on their day-to-day practices. But with the younger students who may be under Plan A and not Plan B, really, they need to stick to more of the fourteen days of quarantine because you can't really guarantee that they'll be able to maintain that six feet of distance. Uh, another situation that we have had recently is with a basketball team. So we've had a, a case where, um, we had a, a sick basketball player, they had had a game, they had had practices, they were all close together. So we did have to quarantine the team. Um, for class purposes and the way that they were handling the classes at the high school level, they were definitely able to do that seven or ten quarantine guidance piece, uh, as far as days. However, for practice, they can't really guarantee that they can keep those players apart. So the practice had to, to be on hold for just a little bit longer. Does that make, make sense to everybody? Excellent, excellent.
And Miss Stute, quickly, there is a second test though, after, if you don't, if you go into quarantine for ten days and you have no symptoms, but there, is there a second test before you come out completely and can mingle around or whatever? Or after the ten days free?
So, so you're, are you talking more when someone is sick?
I'm talking about someone who has been quarantined.
Okay.
Because of being around somebody maybe.
Right, right. So that is an option that you can see right here. Um, that is the option that you would have with the seven-day piece. You see that right there?
Uh-huh.
So if, if you want to try to get out of quarantine a little bit sooner and maybe, you know, you can go to work, for instance, and you can keep your distance from people at work, then around day five or day seven, you can go get a test. And if that test is negative, then you can go back to work on day eight.
So there is a second test?
Sir?
There is a second test?
That will just be one test.
I'm saying after the, right, right.
Yeah, it would just be one test. Really, they do not require, CDC has done away with all guidance requiring any type of negative test if you ever were positive. Because you can actually test positive with the PCR test for up to three months after your initial positive test. So the studies have really shown that after ten days for someone to, for mild to moderate illness, you are, you may shed virus, but you are not shedding enough virus to make anybody sick as long as you meet the guidance here with, with this isolation piece. Does that help?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Great, great. All right, excellent. Um, so I know NEET, um, the charter school here in Elizabeth City, they're participating in a school antigen testing pilot. So they actually have some rapid tests, um, that, that they can do some testing. I haven't gotten an update from them recently. But we do anticipate that this is something that most likely DPI is trying to, to push out across the board as, as schools come back into session. So that way you all have a little bit more, uh, that you can go on real time as far as what potential risk and exposures could be in your school system.
Now, what did you say about DPI, sort of again, that?
That they, um, have antigen tests that they will likely be pushing out to all the school systems based on how that pilot goes. So that way the school nurses can actually, if you had someone, like if your schools were open and you had someone present to the office with symptoms, your school nurse would actually be able to do an antigen test right there on, on school property.
Thank you.
All right. So vaccine, so we are, are, we are definitely hot and heavy in, in the vaccine piece, and we are so excited about this. This truly is the, the light at the end of the tunnel, and I think is just, uh, you know, tremendous as far as, um, what we are, are working through right now and and trying to get this vaccine out to all of our communities. Um, as you all know, I've mentioned, we've, we've already done over twenty thousand vaccines in our eight counties of first doses. Um, today, we are actually beginning some of our larger second-dose clinics. And so from here on, you will start to see both the first-dose clinics and the second-dose clinics kind of working hand in hand. Um, it definitely is, um, is a logistical challenge, and it is one that we are so proud of our staff. Hopefully, if, if you all have, have had any dealings at any of our clinics, they've been positive. Uh, we've heard some really great feedback. Of course, we always hear, um, suggestions for improvement, and we, we appreciate that as well. So just general information about the vaccine itself, you know, a lot of times when we think about flu viruses and everything, those are actually, um, live viruses. And this is not. So this is a lipid nanoparticle, an mRNA vaccine that actually, uh, encodes the spike protein. So this, the spike protein is what facilitates that entry of the virus into the cells. And so it is trying to teach your cells to, to block this particular protein. So this, this technology has actually been in development for well over a decade and has been used for other vaccines. And they're really looking at it as well and and been using it for cancer vaccines. Uh, so it's very exciting. Uh, it is, uh, not a new technology. It is a tried and true technology, and we are very thankful that, that we've been able to see it used in this particular setting. Uh, it does definitely help with, um, being able to get large, large quantities of the vaccine produced when you're not dealing with a live virus. So that is, is excellent. Um, the vaccine ingredients, as you all know, we have Pfizer and Moderna. Um, we did have some Pfizer vaccine in some of the early weeks. Um, lately, everything that we have been giving out is the Moderna. Um, in fact, we are doing our second-dose Pfizer clinics today and tomorrow in Elizabeth City and Pasquotank County and Currituck County. Those are the two counties that received that vaccine. And hopefully, um, we'll be solely on Moderna after, after that point. But these are the ingredients. Uh, what they are finding is that really if anybody is going to have any type of reaction to the virus um, and has a contraindication for the vaccine, not the virus, excuse me, um, it will be because of the ingredients. So it's actually that you have an allergy to one of the ingredients, not so much, um, you know, any, anything else. So, um, that is where, you know, we do recommend, uh, if you do have any, any type of allergies, take a look more closely at the ingredients. So, you know, what, as with any vaccine, protection is not immediate. It does take a little while. So with these two vaccines, you need a two-dose series. There are some one-dose vaccines that are still, uh, in the works. And so those could really be game changers if they get approved. Um, and then roughly about one to two weeks after your second dose, you are considered fully vaccinated. Uh, and while no vaccine is a hundred percent effective, we do know that this vaccine is about ninety to ninety-five percent effective, which is fantastic. Um, we do anticipate that the guidance will, will evolve as we get more people vaccinated. But again, we're still encouraging everyone to do what they can to, to minimize that transmission. So the vaccine is provided at no cost. Um, it is a free, it is a federal asset and federal resource. Um, we can charge an administration fee, so if you have insurance, uh, we can bill your insurance, but there's no out-of-pocket cost whatsoever. Uh, we cannot require, uh, identification or, or proof of status or priority group. We have to go on an individual's word, uh, which, as you can imagine, does make, make it difficult. Um, but we are asking everyone to really, you know, know the priority groups and and help us help our community. Again, we have the Pfizer and the Moderna. Pfizer has been approved for sixteen and older. Moderna has been approved for eighteen and older. Um, Pfizer, you do this around, uh, twenty-one days. So that second dose is about twenty-one days after. You do have a four-day grace period on either side. Uh, actually, really more before because you don't have to start it. If, if you did happen to get kicked out about a week or two, you would not need to restart it. But you do want to try to get as close to that twenty-one-day mark as possible. Um, let's see, the Moderna vaccine is twenty-eight days. Uh, so again, you know, you have some of that, that four-day window, uh, for the Moderna as well. And, and again, we're trying to make sure that our clinic offerings are as close to that as possible. These links that you'll have in the spreadsheet are the actual fact sheets for both types of vaccine. And so definitely encourage you to take a look at those. And then, as you can see here, we're, we're trying to, to figure out our new norm. Uh, we pretty much shut down all clinic offerings in our health department so we can really focus on clinics across the district. Again, we're running second-dose clinics today and tomorrow in Currituck and Pasquotank. And, um, pray that this rain holds off. These are not great days to be outside doing, doing clinics for our staff. They are amazing. Uh, but you can see Wednesday, this is our schedule for Wednesday, so we'll be in Bertie, Camden, Chawan, and Pasquotank. And then on Thursday, Currituck, Gates, Hartford, to Pasquotank, and Perquimans. And so, so those clinics there, we, we tried doing some pre-registration. Um, and what we were finding, we, those simply did not work. We've had a number of people who have been vaccine shopping and hopping. And so we were not able to really schedule and get the vaccine out efficiently. And the way that the, the government is working right now, uh, we are required to exhaust all first doses each week. And so, um, for resource management and, um, being able to get this out most efficiently and effectively, we have gone to more of that first come, first served. Uh, again, with vaccinating over twenty thousand people so far, our goal and our hope is that we are beginning to, to cross that, that threshold of demand, and so hopefully individuals can, um, be able to attend these, and we've got a great flow, you know, at our systems and just asking for, for patients as we try to move through this. Um, and really encouraging individuals to, to look close to home when they get their vaccine. I know we've heard about Virginians coming over into North Carolina and everything else like that. Uh, this is a federal asset, and so we are told we cannot turn individuals away because it's not a North Carolina asset, it is a federal asset. Uh, however, we are hopeful in, in, in our education practices that we are trying to get individuals to focus on their home jurisdiction. And so like, for instance, Virginia has begun opening up some of their efforts this week. In fact, they are even onto essential personnel for, for their vaccines, so even, even more than, than we are technically. All right, these, I'm not going to go a, a tremendous amount into, to this information. This is again, some of just the information on how to protect yourself and the studies. You know, that's physical distancing. Really, if there is anything that you can do, keeping that distance from someone is your, your biggest protection. And then when you layer that with mask and hand washing, uh, that truly gives you a, a very high layer of protection. Nothing is zero risk. Um, I saw this firsthand. My dad, you know, obviously, um, you know, we have been doing everything we can, and and still my dad, uh, got sick. And, um, I depend very much on him for, for my, my son to help me take care of him and and, and whatnot. So amazingly, we are the, we are the poster child for this guidance. My dad, we don't know how he got sick. We honestly have no clue where he was exposed based on, on his efforts. Uh, however, you know, we followed all of this guidance and no one else in our family got sick. So we are definitely that, that poster child that there is no risk, but you can do these steps to protect yourself. Um, hand washing, you know, I, I'm just a public health nerd anyways, um, been in this for over fifteen years now, and hand washing is absolutely crucial. Me and those key research updates, and we're looking at the susceptibility, you know, children versus adults. We definitely, and, and you know, I think we are certainly seeing this in our schools that are open. Um, that children just do not seem to transmit this virus as easily as adults. Any issues that we have had in our schools to date have primarily been from the teachers, to be quite honest with you. So again, thank you, thank you for your, your leadership and your efforts, and let me know if you guys have any questions.
Mrs. Stute, I'd like to thank you for joining us this morning.
Absolutely.
I do want to say that we have a very special thank you for the organization that you all have in, um, I completed the first vaccine. And it was so very organized and smooth, the movement, the information given. And I thank you for joining us and giving us so much information.
Excellent, excellent. We have the best staff. They are just absolutely amazing. Uh, and I'm so thankful that you had a, a positive experience. That really has been the, the overwhelming. If you look at social media, they probably don't love us too much, but I think it's, y'all know how that goes. But any talk to people, they love us.
And I noticed in the paper this weekend, it made front-page news. Um, I did hear some people before that were not getting the information, you know? It would come out in the paper the day of the vaccine.
Right, right.
Front-page news in the Herald this weekend.
We have been, we've been fighting, that is for sure. Just, just to give you guys a little bit of background on that, you know, we, we definitely have that frustration. So the way the vaccine allocation process works is that we really do not know the vaccine that we are getting for the following week until Friday. So as you can imagine, that has been a logistical nightmare. You don't know, number one, are you getting vaccine and how much are you getting? And, you know, so it's taken us quite some time. And so we, we sincerely apologize, but our hands, as you can see, have been tied. Um, so we, Mr. Betts, um, he has been fighting for this region and regular allocations for our communities, and it has paid off. And so that is how we were able to do a little bit more this week. And so our goal, uh, fingers crossed, say a prayer, um, is that we will have a more steady stream of vaccine, but please know this does change at any minute. Uh, and so we appreciate your patience and understanding in that because our, our hands truly are tied in a lot of cases.
But please let your staff know how, how, um, well the job went last Thursday and the week before, really.
Great, great. I will do it. They are amazing. Great.
So thank you, and thank you for joining us this morning.
Absolutely.
Yes, ma'am. I have a question, Madam Chair. Miss, uh, Miss Stute, uh, good morning. How you doing?
Good morning.
Just have a quick question about the, uh, the rapid antigen test. Um, do you know how accurate is that test compared to someone who went and took a rapid test who displayed symptoms compared to an individual who went and may have taken a rapid test simply because they were around the individual who displayed symptoms?
Correct. Yeah, so that's a great question. Um, you know how I mentioned just briefly that depending on what your results and your situation, we may, and you get the antigen, we may get you to take the PCR too? That's the exact reason. Your, your question is the exact reason. So the, the antigen test is best if you are symptomatic and within the first seven days of displaying symptoms. So if you are symptomatic, we are going to take that test. You know, honestly, I, I'll, I'll use my dad. My dad was one. He developed a cough first. Um, and so day two, we, um, he had cough and body aches is how his started. And so we did do the, the rapid, and his came back positive immediately. Um, because my mom had been around him and everything else like that. We didn't know if the exposure was the same. She got the, the rapid, it was negative, so they did a PCR. Uh, so it really, um, it definitely depends on your situation, and we have an algorithm, uh, that we use, uh, to really encourage individuals to get that PCR. If, let's say, for instance, they are, are negative, but they're having symptoms, we may still want them to do that PCR because, again, that's the gold standard.
Thank you.
Great question.
Miss Stute, oh, go ahead, Dennis.
Okay. Miss Stute, Dennis Deloche, how you doing? Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I too have had the first vaccine, and, uh, and I want you to know that even though I didn't take it here in Hartford County, uh, I did take it in a surrounding county because I was there. Uh, let me just give you a description of the process. Uh, we were, uh, somewhere around a hundred cars behind the, the line, the, 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 the front of the line. Uh, the process was so smooth, it took us forty-five minutes to take the, to take the, the vaccine. And in another fifteen minutes, we, we were rested and out of there. It was so efficient, I just couldn't believe, and I complimented the nurses and the staff that was there.
Thank you.
They were doing an excellent job. Uh, my question is, Dr. Fauci, uh, and the CDC, uh, the last couple of days now, was talking about double masking, doubling up, uh, because, uh, simply because double masks prefer, uh, provide a little more protection. Have you heard anything about that at all yet? And, uh?
You know, I haven't, and I wonder if some of that might have to do with more of the layers. You know, um, they do recommend with any mask that, you know, that two to three layer is really the crucial piece. And so, and I think, you know, with some of the gaiters and the other types of masks that may not have some of those layers of protection, um, you know, that could be why they are suggesting that, that double masking piece. Uh, another piece that I could think of with that, um, that we all tend to really take, take for granted. You know, when you're working with a mask, you know, you're exposing this outside piece. And so the cleanliness of the mask and, and the potential droplets that could be on the outside of the mask are just as crucial. So if you double mask, you're pro, pro, providing a set, a layer of protection on that inside mask as well from, from those droplets. And I, you know, we're all guilty of it. Grab the mask. as well from from those droplets. And I, you know, we're all guilty of it. Grab the mask, touch it, you know? We're all guilty of that. Throw it on your desk, use it multiple days. Are we washing them like we should? So that most likely also has something to do with it and and the cleanliness of the mask itself.
And in in addition to what you're saying, they were talking about uh, the new virus, not the new virus, but the new extension of the virus. And that's why, that's why they are promoting a double mask. That was on TV first thing this morning, if you ever had a chance to see.
I missed it.
Thank you again for all you do. We certainly appreciate it and um, it's just a a a tough time and and like Ms. Porter said, uh, our people now have been informed. Uh, I was not aware the first time it was administered here in our county. So now the information is getting getting out there. So we certainly appreciate all you do.
We're trying, we're trying. Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss Stute.
Yes, sir.
Quickly, they talking about the positivity rate now.
Yes.
Okay. The state is somewhere around ten?
Um, let me peek at that really quickly. I haven't looked at the state's numbers recently, but I got it right here. Yes, their daily percent positive is somewhere around ten. Ours, but keep in mind, ours is about a week or so behind that I showed you.
What is, do you have Hurford County? I know we have one of those red
reds.
But what about Hurford County's rate?
Right, for the positivity. Let me pull that up. Hartford County is as of January sixteenth, so again, about a week or so behind. Y'all are at ten point six percent. Y'all, it looks like y'all peaked the last week of December, first of January, on January second at twenty-one percent and now are at ten percent. So you're going in the right direction.
Six tenths of a point.
But the, but the the standard is below five or below? Is that where you want to get it?
Yes, yes. But I'll be honest with you, especially now that we're at the point where more people are are getting sick. I I'm I'm wondering if the state will adjust that.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Because I think more people, I think truly what we're seeing is people are getting tested if they're having symptoms or they've truly been exposed. They're not just going now to get tested, where I think initially we were seeing a lot more of that.
But as a board and making decisions, that data is extremely important.
Right.
Ten five four, ten point six.
But I will say too, you know, again, our, we're not seeing it so much. I truly believe in what we've seen in other counties. Your students aren't as big of a risk as your teachers.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah. But we need the teachers there to teach the students.
Exactly. Yeah, the few situations where we have seen some school systems shut down, it's not because of n- necessarily the cases, it's because they didn't have the teachers to teach.
Right. Now, let me go back to the to the trial thing that said need, that just said that they were going. Would it be broadened to a larger group like a like a public school system? At some point, because that would give a clearer, because of the population.
Right. So they actually have public schools in that pilot. We just do not have any public schools that are in our district. So but there are public schools across the state who are participating in that pilot. And I do believe that is something, in fact, I'll be honest with you, I'm surprised we haven't seen it push out to you guys before now. I'm really surprised. I really thought since that was starting in December, I really thought that by the end of January, we would see it being pushed completely.
Well, the state board meets Wednesday.
And it will be. Could be it.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, that could be it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions? Mrs. Stute, we really appreciate your time and
Absolutely.
important information. Thank you and thank you, your staff, for all they are doing in Hurford and surrounding county.
Thank you all so much. You all have a wonderful day and we will be in touch. Thank you.
Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, members of the board, I also want to say, um, uh, Ms. Stute was really just informed. We kind of played phone tag right at the end of the week and email tag, if there's a such thing. So I, yes, I thank you because of the short notice on on our end. So thank you so much.
We'll, we'll do whatever we can. Thank you. Y'all take care. We're only a phone call away. You're getting a lot of phone calls right now. So just keep going. Take care. Bye, everybody.
Thank you, Miss Stute.
We have a motion to go in the closed session.
Madam Chair, we're having a sharing. Our movement going to closed session.
Second motion, Dennis Deloach.
Allegiance from Mr. Eddie Hall.
Here's Candy. This is public information. You come in.
Mr. Hall, Eddie Hall.
You see back.
Yes, ma'am. I'm back.
We will now have to pledge allegiance. You made a damn mistake.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to accept the agenda at this time?
Madam Chair, we're ensuring we'll just accept the agenda.
Now for second.
Adam Chair, Eddie Hall, I second.
All in favor? All opposed. Motion is passed to accept the agenda. We have at this time, a report from Dr. Wright concerning the newer High School Elementary School.
Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, we are certainly excited about the progress of the uh, the newer High School Elementary School. We have, um, the main building, what I'm calling the main building, the administrative offices as well as the classroom portions are all in what is pretty much called the rough den state, which means that walls are up, uh, not so much sheet rock walls, but the portions of the building that are uh, concreted are all up now for the uh, first and second floors of the classroom wing, um, as well as uh, all uh, roof, um, rough work is has been done. And uh, if you'll notice, um, on the western side of the building, uh, which is the admin side, um, they have started with the uh, veneer brick, um, and and a lot of that work has been done. So I would say the building, the main building is probably about twenty percent uh, completed in terms of brick veneer. Uh, also, there are uh, walls being um, constructed, started on the auditorium portion of the building. Uh, all of the um, under, um, the plumbing work that goes under the auditorium and so forth is in place. And uh, I was out there on Friday and had an opportunity to share some uh, some pictures with the Board of Education on progress. Uh, we are still expecting um, at this point that everything is on schedule and we should be ready to occupy and open school for students. Um, August of twenty twenty-one. And also, um, uh, just this week, in fact, last week, I think it was, um, uh, we met with uh, some furniture companies. So we're in the process also looking at that. There was a a delay with that process, um, not to, not due to any fault of our own. Um, anyway, so we we will be looking at and having demonstration furniture available for us. Um, and possibly even at least a virtual tour to the place where they make them again, uh, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh, so that we can make sure that we uh, we know what kind of furniture we uh, we want, the interactive furniture that we can move around, manipulative furniture, I think some people call it. Uh, but we're looking to um, uh, nail down a company to to work with to get that done. And that should be taking place soon. But um, Bob Lannister, we're really pleased with the progress of of the school.
Are there comments? I would like to thank you for the pictures that you shared with us and as we look at the pictures that from the last visit that we did, we can see where there's a lot of progress that has been made.
Yes, ma'am.
So thank you for that. We'll move on to special recognitions from Dr. Wright.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I have, um, I have a couple of uh, recognitions here today for uh, for some schools and then um, I'm gonna take a point of privilege to uh, talk about some very special people um, this month as well. Uh, first and foremost, uh, we'll do the schools. Uh, we have, um, if I can hold this up so we can kind of see here, um, we have two certificates of achievement. Um, and they are uh, for two of our high schools. Uh, we had two high schools that achieved an outstanding graduation rate of one hundred percent. Now to be clear, what that means for for our high schools is one hundred percent of the students at these two schools that entered the ninth grade uh, graduated, uh, which is, which is a feat that is only reserved for very few schools. And in Hurford County Public Schools, we have two schools that have done that. So the first certificate that you see here, uh, is to CS Brown High School STEM. So let's give them a round of applause. Our second outstanding graduation rate of one hundred percent, again, from ninth grade to twelfth grade is Hurford County Early College High School. And so we, thank you. And so we will get those certificates distributed uh, to those two schools. Now I want to be clear, also, our Hurford County High School uh, did have a one hundred percent graduation rate, but that was uh, seniors that entered the uh, the twelfth grade. Uh, all one hundred percent of those students, um, graduated in in twenty twenty. So uh, certainly we are proud of the progress that they're having there. Um, very soon, we're looking to have these cohort graduation rates, uh, for all three of our schools. Uh, but we're proud of the progress that our our students are making. Uh, also, uh, Ms. Brunette Parker is going to come up and talk a little bit about uh, some very special people. And Ms. Parker, I'm gonna take a point of privilege and kind of talk first and then I'll turn it over to you. One of the things that that um, continues to amaze me, um, as a superintendent is the um, our our school board here in Hurford County. We have a experienced school board. Uh, we have a school board that is, um, dedicated to making sure that we do what is best for students and staff. Um, I consider it an honor and a privilege to to work with this school board. I think that, um, occasionally I will email them and I tell them that I'm honored to serve and I think all of them have gotten to know me well enough uh, to know that I don't say things that I don't mean. So I I do feel honored uh, to serve and and to work with this school board to uh, to to get things done. And so this month is uh, School Board Appreciation Month. Um, you can kind of see behind us here, uh, we have a a ton of gifts, uh, from each school. Uh, these gifts are being presented. I know I'm taking part of your speech away, Ms. Parker. Uh, and and but, um, also just, um, from us to you all, thank you for the work that you do on on a daily basis. Uh, thank you for keeping the superintendent in check when he needs to be put in check. And thank you for working with me to do what's best for uh, students and staff.
Thank you, Dr. Wright, Board Chair Porter, Board Members and Dr. Wright. It's a pleasure to stand before you this afternoon to wish our Board of Education a happy Board Appreciation Day today, which was celebrated the entire month. This year's theme is launching the next generation. We thank you for your support and dedication to our students, staff, parents and community. At this time, I have our district teacher of the year from Riverview Elementary School, Kent, Mrs. Candy. Candace Fleetwood will be doing a special tribute at this time. Mrs. Fleetwood?
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Madam Chair Porter, Board Members and Dr. Wright. January is School Board Recognition Month. As district teacher of the year and on behalf of our superintendent, Dr. Wright, and employees of Hurford County Public Schools, I would like to say thank you for your leadership, commitment and integrity. As school board members, you are the unsung heroes of public education. Through your tireless efforts and vision, you ensure that our schools are held accountable to the community and advocating continuous improvement in student learning. With our theme in mind, launching the next generation, I would like to read two quotes in dedication to you. Leaders become great not because of their power, but because of their in their ability to empower others. John Maxwell. The principal goal of education is to create men and women capable of doing new things, not simply repeating what other generations have done. Jean Pageant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Fleetwood. And you also, board members, we have a special candy bar that Mrs. Fleetwood has prepared for you. And she has a special poem on this candy bar along with our superintendent. And it says, how to be a super leader. Be a super leader. You know you have the tools. All you need to remember are the seven simple rules. Begin with the end in mind and understand to be understood. Put first things first and always sharpen the saw before sawing the wood. Be proactive and determined to help everyone realize, in order for us to all to win, we have to synergize. Thanks for all you do, Mrs. Candy Fleetwood. Let's give Mrs. Fleetwood a hand.
We really appreciate you taking your valuable time um, to think about us. We do agree with your poem with the seven simple rules. But it's most important to let you and our other teachers know how valuable that you are to our district and our Hurford County School family. You came back after holidays where you got a little rest. But for those that I have talked with, you came back positive, energetic and ready to go. So we thank you. While you're thanking us, we know how in important it is to have our teachers with a positive attitude and ready to go. So thank you so much for thinking of us. We really appreciate it. Thank you for your time, your time. Thank you for your time, your talent, and your gifts. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments?
No, ma'am.
Have a great day.
We have more for our board members. Again, today, we are recognizing you for all your special efforts toward our staff, students, and parents. If you look behind us, as Dr. Wright said, we have special gifts. We have snacks and all different treats to eat. But there is also something in there special. On behalf of Star Registry and Early College High School, we would like to officially present confirmation and congratulations on the successful registration of your very own unique star. You have a star that is recognized for Herford County Public Schools Board of Education up in the sky, because you all are stars. So, there is a certificate in your bag in the middle, and Dr. Wright will have the official one in order to hang on our wall here at Herford County Public Schools Board of Education. Also, to show our appreciation, we are asking the board members to participate in a drive-by at the central office to pick up gifts of love from our schools after the board meeting today. Once you arrive, just call the front desk, and we will bring the gifts to your vehicle. Thank you, and have a great day.
Now, you can't ask for any more than that. All you have to do is drive up, and they'll bring it to you. Thank you so much. And I see my fellow board members smiling, because we do have stars now. So, thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before Ms. Parker leaves?
Yes, Ms. Parker.
Tell her to come back and do the picture, then make sure. Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir.
Are those pearls around your neck?
Yes, they are.
I'll leave it at that.
All right.
Congrats. Thank you, Madam Chair.
He has on chucks too.
All right.
Thank you so much, Ms. Parker, Dr. Wright. We will now have our bulletin board description from Ms. Parker.
Madam Chair Porter, board members, Dr. Wright, this month, January, the bulletin boards were done by Ahoski Elementary School. Mrs. Elena Riddick is the principal. If you will look, the boardroom board creators were Barbara Norman, the art teacher, Amber Moore, the media coordinator, and Ebony Rankins, the school counselor. In the lobby, it states, "We are like snowflakes, all different and all special." And our boardroom is dedicated to our board members. It's no secret, our school board is the best. Let's give Ahoski Elementary a hand. Thank you.
Is there any public input at this time? Do we need a five-minute recess? Okay, we'll move on. We will now have our resignations and retirements transfers from Mrs. Cherry.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
For Section 4.1, Resignations, Retirements, and Transfers, you have the information before you? Okay, Section 4.2, Employment Recommendations. You have before you Cassandra Fairclaw being recommended for fifth-grade math teacher at Riverview Elementary School, Monique Garrison being recommended as fifth-grade ELA teacher at Riverview Elementary School, Camille Gale being recommended as second-grade teacher at Riverview Elementary School, Kamen Holloway being recommended as a music band teacher at Herford County Middle School, Mary Salz being recommended as an English teacher at CS Brown STEM High School, Melanie Maven being recommended as elementary teacher at Ahoski Elementary School, and Siobhan Sessoms being recommended as teacher assistant at Herford County Middle School.
May I have a motion at this time to approve the certified recommendations coming from administration?
Madam Chair, when they're whole, make a motion that we approve the certified recommendations coming from the administration?
May I have a second?
Madam Chair, Reverend Sharon, I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. Motion has been passed for employment recommendations for certified STEM. Ms. Cherry?
Section 4.3 is additional employment. We're seeking additional employment for Susan Allen as math teacher at CS Brown, Larry Carter as long-term substitute teacher at Ahoski Elementary School, Sarah Davis as math tutor at Herford County High School, Serena Di Socio as long-term substitute teacher at Early College High School, and Elizabeth Hollensworth as lead nurse for the district.
At this time, may I have a motion to approve the additional employment?
Madam Chair?
Right.
Go ahead, Reverend. Go ahead. Go ahead, Reverend Sharon. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, I move that we accept the recommendation for additional employment coming to us from administration.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The additional employment recommendation by administration has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cherry. At this time, we'll have our budget amendments by Mrs. Martin.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Dr. Wright, Chair Porter. You have before you Budget Amendment Number Three, State Public School Fund for an increase of $114,527, and Budget Amendment Number Four for the Federal Grants Fund, an increase of $173,440. For your approval.
May I have other questions or concerns? May I have a motion to approve Budget Three and Four? Do the budget resolutions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The budget amendment has been passed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since we're on budgets, I just want to share something, if I may. At this point, I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, you haven't finished. I apologize.
Yes, Mr. Hall.
Has Ms. Martin finished?
Are you finished?
I have one more.
That's why I apologize.
That's fine. You also have before you the notice of pension spiking, which I am required to provide to the board and also to the county commissioners with just a listing for the county commissioners. It would just be, there were two names on the list, and this is provided for your information as required by statute.
Okay, thank you. Now, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And talking about budgets, and you might have heard me have some concerns, I just want to, you know, we have 59 students approximately that attends our charter public schools in North Carolina. We have 31 at Three Rivers, 19 at the NC Virtual School, two at Kip. And this total amount of funds that we are paying out, it's a little over $500,000 per year that comes out of our local budget, along with the state funding budget. And my point is, is that two things I think is gonna have to occur. We're gonna have to get better at what we do in educating kids, to get more of these kids to stay within the traditional public schools, and also to understand that that is a hit to our local budget also. And Ms. Martin knows more about the particulars. But you know, the other month, I asked for how many kids, because a lot of the dollars are sent directly from DPI to the individual charter schools, public charter schools that we have. And I just hope that that 59 students is accurate count. But a half a million dollars coming out of our budget can be a major hit as it goes on, and we need to do all that we can to improve our schools and make sure it is an alternative to any other form of education in the state. With that being said, I just want to make sure that we understand when we talk about fund balance, because now, public charter schools can access fund balances. Thank you.
I thank you for your comments. Ms. Martin, would you like to say anything to the board?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much for your comment, Dr. Mr. Hall. And that half million dollars is a great amount of money, and I agree totally with what you have expressed. And thank you, Ms. Martin, for your information. At this time, we'll move on to policy revision.
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have several policies before you that are the result of review and revision based on recommendations from the North Carolina School Boards Association. The numbers are on your agenda file here. Madam Chair, do you want me to read them all, or? There's a whole bunch of them here.
I think that you can state 5.3 policy.
Okay, right. Under 5.3, the recommendation is that these policy changes should be submitted for first reading, which means that they'll stay on the books for 30 days to be reviewed, and considering that everything goes well, we'll be recommending approval at our meeting in February.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Chair?
Any questions concerning the policy?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
When they're whole? I want to make a recommendation to the board that we approve a number of these policies on its first reading, which is today. My reason is that, example, the policy 1510 deals with the COVID issue. Am I correct, Dr. Wright?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And then, we have policy, we have the ethics policy, which I think is in place, should be in place right now. We have the, I'm assuming, I don't know if this is it or not, the one with ethics, but the one with dealing with facilities use. As we move into our facility, you know, people renting our facility, I think, and the new facility coming onboard, I would hope that we would approve those first reading, the visitor policy, which is 5020, and the social media. Now, we've had a big thing with teachers using social media inappropriately, which is 7335. And I'm assuming, Dr. Wright, is equity, is that an attempt, 4001, to deal with the equity issue that I spoke of last month about us having?
Yes, sir.
An equity policy?
Yes, sir.
If that is, then I would hope that we would do a little bit more. But even with that, I'm asking the board to consider those policies to be approved of those first reading, for those reasons.
May I have a motion to approve the policies that Mr. Hall has recommended at this time to accept those policies at first reading?
It is my motion, Madam Chair.
Ma'am Chair, Reverend Sharon, I second the motion.
Are there any questions or concerns? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion has been accepted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, board members.
To accept the policy. Thank you, Mr. Hall. We'll move on to our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Additionally, before we get into the prepared highlights, I do want to, again, reiterate my thanks to our school board and congratulations on School Board Appreciation Month, and particularly right now with all the decisions that we're having to make, hats off to you for the work that you're doing. It's been a tough, just about a year now for us in terms of the decisions that we're making. So, hopefully, our staff, when we see or Zoom with one of the board members, please take an extra special time to say thank you, to the work that you all do. At this time, I have some highlights. I try to keep them brief, but there's a lot of wonderful things going on in Herford County Public Schools. And I just want to start off by saying that although we are not in face-to-face instruction, school is going on, learning is taking place. And so, let's start off, please keep the following families in your thoughts and prayers. We send our condolences and prayers to the Merritt family. Lori Merritt, who is our Assistant Finance Officer, lost her mother. Ms. Dotsey Leary Nurme Dunlow, who was 84. She passed away on Wednesday, January 13. Celebration of her life was held last week, January 17, in Windsor. And so, we ask that you continue to pray for Lori and her family during their time of bereavement and loss. We also send our condolences and prayers to the Bond family, Mr. Duke Bond Jr., who retired from the Herford County Schools Maintenance Department. He's from Ahoski, and he departed, he passed away on Tuesday, January 19, in Greenville. He's a native of Chilwan County, and his celebration of life is actually being held right now. Today started at 11 o'clock at Hunter's Funeral Home. January 3, at the Early College High School, we have parent information sessions for the Spring '21 semester. January 4, they had a drive-through scheduled college textbook and report card pickup. January 15, they had virtual honor roll celebration. And January 29, the applications for the upcoming '21-'22 school year are due. CS Brown High School STEM is hosting an honor roll drive on Thursday, January 28. That's upcoming, 3 to 6 p.m. The ACT for CS Brown High School STEM is set for Tuesday, February 23. It'll be on campus, and it will begin at 8 o'clock a.m. And attestation forms have already been sent out to juniors. And attestation forms have already been sent out uh, to juniors. Riverview Elementary School, the third graders were given the BOG test, uh, Beginning of Grade Test. Uh, that happened last week, Thursday, January twenty-first and Friday, January twenty-second. Students and staff followed all CDC procedures through this process. The screening, temperature checks, wearing masks, washing hands, sanitizing, six feet, social distancing, et cetera. And uh, the principals asked that we send special kudos to Mrs. Terrell Delo, she's Assistant Principal, for doing an outstanding job in facilitating the testing process. We send our condolences and prayers out to the Boone family. Ms. Barbara Boone's husband, Randy Boone, passed away Tuesday, January twelfth. Uh, the funeral was held uh, this past Saturday. And Ms. Barbara Boone is a child nutrition assistant uh, at Riverview Elementary. So please continue to keep her and her family in prayer during their hour of bereavement. Uh, Riverview Elementary will also have a honor roll drive this coming Thursday, beginning, a drive-through, uh, beginning on uh, Thursday, one o'clock to three o'clock. Certificates will be distributed to our students in recognition of their academic achievement. Ahoski Elementary School sends condolences and prayers to the Liverman family. Mrs. Christina Liverman, AES teacher, lost her husband, Mr. Billy Liverman, on January tenth. The services were held on January fourteenth. Please pray for her and her family during the hour of bereavement. Hurford County Middle School sends its condolences and prayers and asks you to join in to the Bunch Benson family. Ms. Shante Bunch, H-C-M-S bus driver, her mother, Mrs. Mary Elizabeth Moore Benson of Fayetteville, formerly of Ahoski, departed uh, her life on January first, uh, New Year's Day in Fayetteville, North Carolina. And the celebration of life was held on January ninth at the Carpenter Shop in Ahoski, North Carolina. We also wanna send special congratulations out to the Hurford County Public Schools Honor Roll student uh, for their second nine weeks and all of the hard work that they are doing. Madam Chair, that's all I have at this point.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Delo, may we have from you?
Thank you, ma'am, for comments. Uh, thank you, Ms. Porter. Um, my sentiments surely go out to all of those who have lost their loved ones during this time, and my prayers and thoughts certainly goes out to them. I certainly wanna mention Mr. Bond by name. I grew up knowing Mr. Duke Bond as a little boy, lived not far from him, and have known him at least thirty, forty years probably. He was an excellent person in our school system. He did a lot of work for us. Even when he retired, he did a lot of work for the school system as well. I know this, at Orietta Van, when he retired, no one knew where the plumbing issues were. But if you called Duke Bond, he knew where everything was, and he knew how to resolve those situations. So I certainly thank him for all that he did for us during his time. Certainly wanna thank Ms. Fleetwood also for her tribute to the board. Uh, thank her for the work that she does and for all the teachers and for everything that that they do for our children. Thank the principals and staff for thinking of us, their gifts, for thinking of us during this special time. Uh, it's good to be remembered. So again, thank you so much. And as we continue to be safe during these difficult times, we wanna take the opportunity to encourage everyone to continue to follow all the guidelines possible, anything that they can do to continue to keep themselves and their families safe as well. Thank you, and and that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Delo. Mr. Eddie Hall, may we have comments from you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, certainly my prayers and thoughts go out with all the families that are dealing with bereavements at this time. Um, thank you, principals and staff, and to the schools for your uh, gifts um, this morning, your presentation. Also to Ms. Fleetwood, uh, for your kind words. I'm also wanted to, I know we just recently had the drive-through ceremony for the new principal of Hurford County High School. So again, wanted to welcome Dr. Leach to the uh, Hurford County Public Schools family. Um, and we pray his much success during his time here with us. Um, also, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Mrs. Superintendent, I had the opportunity um, to visit our schools as well. And I wanted to say, um, thank you to all of our staff um, for the great job that you all continue to do even in the midst of this pandemic. I know it's difficult um, for all of us, and we're all adjusting, but you all continue um, to strive for the best and to ensure that our students are getting a quality education. I just wanna simply say thank you um, to everyone um, in the midst of the pandemic for the hard work that they continue to do um, during this time. And again, stay safe, um, practice social distance and practice all those guidelines. Um, and we look forward, and we will get through this, guys, and we'll get through it together. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Dr. Share.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me just say that I've been having some, some serious technicality over here. I do, I'll keep all of the families in my prayers and thoughts that have lost loved ones, and we're losing a lot of people uh, with this pandemic. So we're praying for the Hurford County Board, uh, school, uh, district family. And all of them are grieving right now. Again, I wanna just encourage everybody to try to stay safe, do the best you can, and eventually we're gonna get back in school. Can you all hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Out of the clear.
But I I I'm having some serious issues over here. I don't know if it's my internet or what. But anyway, thank you all so much. And again, congratulations to all of our teachers, everybody who's working hard. And eventually, we're gonna get past it. So thank you so much, and y'all be safe and have a good day.
Thank you so much. Dr. Hall, uh, Mr. Hall, may we also have your report from the State Board along with your comment?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I also get over the comments of my fellow board members. And condolences go out to those individuals or the family who have lost loved loved ones. Uh, like Mr. Delo, uh, special uh, recognition for Duke Bond. Uh, he and I go back probably, oh, fifty years. We used to ride those motorcycles together. And uh, and and as Mr. Lo has mentioned, there's piping in Hurford County schools underground that only one person knows about there, where they are and whatnot. And of course, this person has been called home for rest. But he did a lot of plumbing work throughout this uh, county and this public school system. And surely my condolences uh, go out to him and his family. I I was hoping to be able to attend the service, but because of the timing, I was unable to do it. Uh, but I do thank all of our school employees for everything that they are doing and everything that they will do. As you can see, I got my work hat on. I'm gonna wear my work hat at every board meeting. And what it really stands for, if you look at it, there's a S, a O, and a F. S-O-S, which stands for I'm older, I'm slower, and I'm smarter than what I used to be. I understand my limitations now in life. But even with that being said, uh, I do want to bring up to uh, snuff maybe on some issues. And going back to athletes, the State Board of Education in October passed a policy that uh, delayed the EOC test for any child who didn't want to be in uh, face-to-face and taking the EOC test until June. I don't know how many of our EOC takers took advantage of that. But Dr. Wright and your staff, I would like to know the number who asked for their EOC test to be delayed until up to June. And how many of those students were athletes? Uh, as soon as you can get that data, uh, because we are having, the State Board will be meeting in Winston. But we're all in emergency meeting. But we are, we are having some issues with the eligibility issue with our student athletes across the state. And hopefully, we were hoping that this would help some and delete, and helping with that eligibility issue as well as kids not feeling safe to do uh, face-to-face. As you well know, the EOCs have to be face-to-face. Uh, you can't do it online. So how many of our students took advantage of it? And how many of those students were quote-unquote athletes? They have delayed taking their EOC until up to June.
Uh, we have, um, Ms. Ward may address some of those questions.
Oh, she was fast.
Madam Chair, Dr. Wright, and board members, uh, for the fall testing, at this point, eighty-six percent of our students who were um, in courses that required an EOC test uh, came and took the exam either on the week of testing or the first makeup period. That is um, a hundred and eighty-four students out of the required two hundred and twenty-three, which leaves us thirty-nine students that still need to make up for the fall semester.
Of that thirty-nine, do you know if there were any student athletes in that group?
I do not know. I know we sent out a word that they needed to make sure the student athletes tested so that they would be eligible.
Correct.
All students who did not test were given incompletes until such time as they're able to meet that requirement up through spring testing.
But I would still like to know that thirty-nine, how many were student athletes?
We can get that information and get it out to the board in a, in an email.
Okay, well, that's critical. Uh, the State Board, as you well know, we're in the process of adopting social studies standards. Last month, there was a major discussion about the explicit language in the standard. Uh, words like gender identity, racism, white superiority, I can go on and on and on uh, about some of the language that some members had some concerns about. Uh, we will be meeting this Wednesday about those standards. Uh, I did send you a copy of the seventeen-seventy-six report that was immediately shut down by the incoming uh, President, President Biden. He took it down on the web page because of its content and what it was saying. Uh, the State Board is truly concerned about our new standard, standards being inclusive of all uh, people who may just state as great as it is today. So we'll just see where that uh, falls out as we talk about it again on Wednesday. I will say that of the hundred and fifteen school districts in the state, the State Board is aware of the fact that eighty-six, eighty-three of the hundred and fifteen are rural school systems. We're saying, I, we're saying in itself that we need to do a whole lot to address the need of rural school system. Uh, we still continue to see an increase in the number of public charter schools requests each month to come on board. I think we have uh, five that's coming on board this upcoming year. Be aware that the State Board did ask for a waiver officially from the Department of Education in D.C. A waiver on the ninety-five percent rule that's a federal requirement and the accountability section on our end of grade testing results, which is a part of the ESSA. We hope that we will get that uh, waiver. We don't know with the new administration. Uh, maybe we'll, we have a chance. Under DeBose, our former Secretary of Education, that was a no-go. But it's ninety-five percent rule and accountability rule, we did ask for a waiver by the school districts, and we'll wait to uh, hear from them. Uh, the budget, the State Board and DPI together is is putting together a budget to present in a unified budget to the General Assembly when it comes back in, I think next week. I think they come back next week. And we were starting hashing that out. This would be one of the first time. It was a unified budget between the State Board and the uh, uh, Department of Public Instruction. Uh, there are other things that's going on that's minor, but this standard, uh, the uh, social study standards is a, is a real concern. There were seven thousand responses from teachers across the state approving of the language that's in it. Uh, we will be looking at some revised wording on Wednesday, and we'll go from there. But it's one belief. You cannot deal with a disease when you pretend that it's not there. Racism, systematic racism, institutional racism is for real. It's been here, it's always been here, now it's time to deal with it in our history books. Native Americans were here before Columbus stepped on the ground. They were already here. Native Americans did a lot to improve conditions in the state and this country. And it's time for all people to be recognized, all groups, for their contributions. And let's hope that our social studies uh, curriculum, I'm sorry, standards and curriculum will focus on those things of all people. With that being said, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity. Uh, we'll see on Wednesday or next month about these standards.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your information. It really enlightens us to what's going on um, in Raleigh and elsewhere. So thank you so much. Uh, my comments are, I would like to congratulate our students for receiving honor roll certificates. They have worked hard this year. It was um, they hung with us as adults because it's a challenge for our children. And for them to receive honors for doing their very best. Uh, uh, they need to be commended. They need to be commended at staying home, going through the trials and tribulations of having to adjust. So I would just like to say congratulations, and let's keep it moving to those students and to all of our students. But note, those honor roll students receiving their certificates of achievement. Also, we met with the Abama Regional Health Center this morning. Uh, Mrs. Stup is always volunteering to meet with us to give us more information concerning what is going on in our state and in our counties. So we are really appreciative of her meeting with us. Um, after we meet with her, I would like for the public to know sometimes we go over into our board meetings much longer than we planned. But uh, that is no problem for us because we want you to realize it takes time to make decisions. Your children are our children. Our hearts are with them, our feelings are with them. And parents, you have pulled along with us, and you have supported us doing our decisions. So when we met with her this morning and um, discussed, our board made a decision. And Dr. Wright could just share that decision with you at this time. But we want to thank you, parents and community. Uh, but we do meet with our health department monthly. And we choose surveys, we have a number of sources that we discuss before we make any decision concerning our students. But our main priority is the health and well-being of the students in Hurford County. Sure, all of us, all of us on the board and in and in administration would love to see our students return to school. But we want to provide a healthy and a safe place for them to return. When we consider what our emotions, our thoughts, we consider what's best for our students as far as health and safety. So thank you for your support. I would also like to send our thoughts and prayers for our relatives that have passed in the last month. I mean, the list, it seems to go on and on. But our prayers and our sympathy is with all of the families that have lost their loved ones during the last month. I would also like to add one more to that list. There was Mrs. Ethel Joyner. She was an instructional assistant at Ahoski Elementary. She retired from Herbert County Schools, and she passed, and her services were yesterday. So to everyone, we may not get to see you, may not get to talk with you about your passing. But from the bottom of our heart, we send our sympathy, our love, and our prayers to you. I would also like to say thank you for the beautiful gifts with everything that our staff, our administration, central office, in this school building, every department. I don't want to miss anyone. For all that you have to do at this point in time, and you think about us as board members, I send out a big thank you, and I really appreciate your thoughts. The drive-through with Dr. Leach, I think, turned out very well. I did go over to speak with him, and I hope him much success during his career at Herbert County High School. I would like to commend the two high schools for their one hundred percent graduation rate at this time. I think that's all that I have to say. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Wright at this time, and he has a statement concerning the opening of our schools or reopening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Herbert County Board of Education has opted to continue to operate under option C for all students and staff. And that decision is until we are notified to do otherwise. So at this time, we're going to continue to operate under option C. The Board of Education has also asked me to reiterate that we are investigating the possibility of reopening school buildings at such time that it is deemed safe for students. In terms of athletics, all athletic sports that are due to resume will do so effective February second. That will be basketball and soccer. And then football practice, the board has approved for that to begin. End of season also, practice will begin February eighth. The first contest will be, will be set for February twenty-sixth. All of this, of course, is pending on continued guidance and continued compliance with the guidance set forth by the CDC, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, and our local health agencies. Did I get it all in, Madam Chair?
I think so.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Our next meeting will be held on February, February...
Twenty-second.
February the twenty-second.
We'll do ten A.M., Madam Chair.
At ten A.M., yes.
Okay.
May I have a motion at this time to adjourn the meeting?
A motion to adjourn the meeting? Ms. Dr., I'm sorry. Chair Porter?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting has been adjourned. Thank you, board members, for so much input and collaboration.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
Don't forget to pick up your gifts.